A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, ununderdogged, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and happy birthday Jim.
And happy birthday Jim Battle. She said we couldn't sing to her but happy birthday.
Let the record show.
Yes, the record show is Jim's birthday.
Here, Daniel.
Here.
Durbin.
Here.
Eaton.
Here.
Keith.
Present.
Ronnie.
Yes.
Thank you. Does anybody have any objections to the motion for passing all of the minutes from February 14th to 28th and March 14th to 2023? May I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes on February 14th, 28th, and March 14th.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call. Paddle?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, mayor's comments. First of all, I'd like to thank Sandy Collins for her many years of service on the planning board. Her expertise and time are much appreciated and we hope that she continues to participate in future discussions. And I think she will because she's already come to a committee meeting. So, thank you Sandy. Next up is the flood update. Jim is out and so we will hear from Courtney. Courtney, do you have any news on floods?
I have a few things. So just a reminder, there is a DEQ public meeting on Thursday at 6:00 and it's being hosted at the museum in town. So again, there is a draft environmental assessment out that pretty much summarizes some of the questions in their joint application. But that is available for review and comment. I've received a couple of comments, but that's still open. And anyone, please feel free to come to the public meeting to learn more about their project specifically, just in order to the Nathan Cooper with the coal repository. I did receive on Friday afternoon, I received the MDT bridge repair joint application, joint permit. So that has, will be noticed in the paper on Thursday. It's open for public comment until mid-April. So just reach out to me if anyone would like to see those materials regarding the MDT project for the 308 and 19th Street bridges. I went to flood conference and billing and I got some children's education. The NRC was gracious enough to give me some copies. These will be available as well at the Earth Day block party on April 29th. But if anyone is interested in using children's education called Discover Flood, Discover the Yellowstone River. Part of our campaign to try to just raise flood awareness throughout the month of March. So I have some copies available. It's also online for 99 cents. I think you can get this online. And then the last thing is I've received a few comments for the DES, the Dream Removal Project. And I've just been boarding those as they come in. I've had a couple of comments on a specific area, pretty much like straight down 11th Street where there was some gravel deposited. So DES is aware of that and is looking into getting that permitted through FEMA. But it just, again, I have to go through a specific analysis to, for FEMA approval to take care of that area. But we are aware of it. That's probably the one I've gotten most comments on, related to DES.
Thank you.
Courtney, can you repeat the meeting that's happening on Thursday, please?
It is the Montana DEQ public meeting for their flood plain permit application for the coal repository.
Okay.
All right. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, the county disaster and emergency services is holding a meeting for city officials in April to discuss coordination between city, county, and state disaster resources. Council will be receiving a notice of that meeting later this week. After that meeting takes place, the city looks forward to working with county disaster and emergency services to propose to host a public meeting to provide information and answer any questions regarding past or current disasters, including a potential spring flood. In the meantime, if you have any questions or know of anyone who has questions, please ask them to contact the city and we will either answer their questions or tell them where they can get more information. Next up is farmers market. I'm going to try and note this to you, applications we receive for MOUs or event permits. The city's received an application for the farmers market to use Lions Park this summer to conduct the market. The city's working on a memorandum of understanding for that event and will most likely be providing that to the farmers market in the next week or so. If anyone has any comments or concerns for this event, please do not hesitate to call or send a message in. On another matter, I serve as a community. I do my best to make fair and well-informed decisions and follow the law and the procedures to implement proposals with the goal to keep Red Lodge economically stable and a nice place to live. People helping people are evident throughout our community, most notably during the last single storm and flood. And I see people helping people every day. Teresa Whistler is one of those people. She has an extensive resume in this community, working tirelessly to help out with a myriad of issues, both through her work with the community foundation and the city. Her work for the observatory is thorough and selfless. I'm honored the community of Red Lodge will benefit for years to come because of her dedication. A recent news article portrays her as somewhat shady, self-serving individual. And nothing could be further from the truth as far as I and many others in the community know. So I guess my point is, let's just keep working together to do the best we can. And as always, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call city health. And with that, we'll move on to those comments. So if anybody would like to, and I would just like to add, short-term round is on our agenda today. And that's a pretty touchy subject with both sides. And I'm sure that a lot of you have questions. But we're going to have two public hearings for any ordinance that is offered or that issue. And during this time, then you'll have more opportunities to make statements. So please keep track of the things that you're concerned about so that we can address them at that time. And yeah, it's always nice to have a heads up. If you want to email your comments to us, we all will look at them. So with that being said, if anybody has any public comments, please feel free to make them this evening. Just keep them to three minutes. And we don't have any other rule unless you're not ready.
I haven't.
So does anybody have a comment? If you approach the podium and state your name and your idea.
Okay, I'll go. Chelsea Tupin, AOSB North Howzer. Just want to say that was appreciative still to participate with the land use meeting this morning. And in terms of what planning board is recommending for the STR restrictions or uses, purposes, intent, all of that, the definitions of the zoning code, I do want to say that I did send notes to you guys. I tried to get them to planning board on time, but as you can imagine, it was really busy folks. So I was doing my best there, tried to address some of the things within that new ordinance that would like to see changed. Again, I sent that to all of you here. I would love it if you would take an opportunity to kind of review that because it wasn't trying to be malicious or anything along those lines, just a professional input. And I think it would be valuable moving forward, doing any sort of ordinance. I tried to be thorough, at least do, part of the reason three minutes doesn't always work. And I will try and be better about getting these things to you sooner, even if that requires staying up later hours. And anyhow, that's really all I have to say at this point. And thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jen Cap, AIT North Platte. Owner-operator AAA Red Lodge rental, citizen of Red Lodge for 20 years. Just very appreciative of the land use and planning meeting today that I went to and the ability to discuss with council in more of a, kind of a dialogue between professional management in town and possible ordinances. So thank you for that opportunity. I thought it was very helpful. And yeah, I'll be involved in public hearings. But as always, if you have any questions about professional management.
Thank you, Jen. Anyone else? Andy. Yeah. Andy Conley, 307, Hagan Avenue South. The planning board, I was really disappointed that the planning board was never given the economic impact that Julie did on the committee. And I thought that that was an important part of the entire thing. We were never given that. I did bring it up a couple times, but it's never been in our package. And the other thing I was disappointed in, and I see you guys have the full, I assume, that you guys have the full survey with the summary at the end. We were not provided that complete survey with the summary that I picked up actually on the committee table. And I thought the summary was really important, but we were not provided with that summary either. So I was just a little disappointed that things that I knew happened in the meeting, in the committee meeting, were not given to the planning board. That's it. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online want to make a comment? Any more comments from anyone? All right. Thank you. We had an airport information presentation scheduled, but due to unforeseen circumstances, we have to postpone that again. And so thank you for that. Next up is new business, Resolution 3620 about recycling center fees. Chris Key, do you want to introduce that?
I will. This is Resolution 3620, recycling center fees. This is a culmination of a year of research and discussion by many of us here at the table to determine the best and most cost-effective option for securing recycling services for our community. The resolution sets a $6 per month fee for residents to be charged on water bills, as well as membership fees for businesses and fees for non-city resident users. Fees will be collected and used to operate the recycling facility, cover the maintenance and equipment costs, and cover contracts necessary for operations. The resolution includes an annual review of the actual expenditures and revenues to ensure the monthly fees appropriate and sufficient, and an annual review of overall usage to determine if hours of operation meet the needs of the community. The resolution also names Public Works Department as responsible for management of the facility and mandates that the hours of operation be listed on the city website. So that's the summary of resolution. Additionally, I'd like to add that the admin committee reviewed a number of different options for mechanisms to collect the fees. And the water bill seemed the most appropriate for this year if fees could begin to be collected in time to ensure uninterrupted services for the community this summer when the nonprofit currently operating the recycling center dissolves. So in the future, council could consider assessing the fees as we currently do with waste disposal on the bi-yearly tax bill. So one other thing to note is that we did look at keeping the membership-only structure that was asked several times. And doing so would not ensure consistent revenue stream from year to year and require additional staff capacity to promote and would falter the budget required to operate as a city service. So we rejected that in favor of doing the monthly fee.
Okay. Are you done?
I am done.
This is only up for discussion today. And so. Does anybody have any questions in particular? Or else we can go around the table.
I do. So I just had a question about funding this. And I would assume everybody at least here on the council saw Mary Cameron's email. And so I wanted to know if you guys had considered a special tax district and what your thoughts were on that?
We didn't pursue that designation of a district at this time because we have other more pressing economic needs. And the group that's currently running it is going to be dissolving July 1st. And we didn't think that we could pull that together that quickly.
What do you mean economic needs? I guess I'm not understanding what that means.
There's, we kind of discussed it a little bit at the admin meeting. Specifically, you know, if we wanted to pursue possibly a special tax district to be voted, you know, it'd have to go to vote. You'd have to put out an area for that district and then it'd have to be voted on. So we do not have time this year to do that. And it was brought up that there are a lot of other economic asks of possible districts moving forward that may happen. And we wanted, it was basically, yeah, that this funding source right here is the best option moving forward for the short term. You know, that doesn't mean that that might not happen down the road. But right now for this next year, you know, we probably, this would be the bottom of the ask for a special district. You know, there could be a street, there could be parks, there could be a safety. None of those are necessarily going to happen, but those would take precedence over a recycling district is what the admin had discussed. So, you know, and council may decide to do something different because obviously admin is not the end-all, be-all for that.
Yeah, I guess because my one concern is by imposing that $6 a month fee, which for a lot of people is probably not a big deal. Again, if we are going to be requiring other taxes from people for other items, where is this going to fit in people's priority for the people that are here, the citizens of Red Lodge? And so that's my only concern is that, you know, where would that priority be if people were, you know, could look ahead and see what they're going to be asked to pay? Where would this? I mean, you know, as we looked at it when I did that presentation, you know, we have less than 20% of the people in Red Lodge that recycle. I am one of them, I will say that, I have a membership. But less than 20% recycle and less than 15% of the businesses recycle. So I think that's an important thing to just consider when we're looking at this and getting feedback from the community.
I think I would also just say regarding that particular idea for addressing the cost. I believe one of the recommendations that Mike put forward in her email was this would be a way to encompass county votes. And I would say at this point, I think it would be a good idea for the city to maintain ownership and management of the facility. And then looking at, you know, if it's the case that there's a huge spike in county participants doing drop-off or paying the $120, then we can look at a district because it would make more sense. But as it stands right now with the data, I don't think that it's appropriate.
I just want to make, I'll just flip in one more comment. She talked about this being a fair fee structure. So I would just encourage everybody to read this. And I know it's going to be made available to the public in the agenda meeting, agenda next time. But it's something to consider, so.
Any further discussion? All right. Move on. The next up is the Whistler Observatory at MOU. The Resolution 3599 was passed by, by council in April of 2022, I believe. The MOU has nothing to do with Teresa as much as it has to do with the city's management of that facility. So I hope you can look carefully at this MOU so that if there's any, this is up for discussion and action. So we need to make sure that we have a good MOU for that facility. So is there any discussion? I guess we could have a motion for, clear motion.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Red Lodge and Hero's Dean Center.
There's a connection. All right, discussion, does anybody have, yes, Terry?
Yeah, I have a question about that. When we met a little earlier, we asked, you know, we were in the new public works. We asked Dennison if he had a chance to look at this to make sure the city is covered. And he hadn't looked at this memorandum. And so I was just curious, Dennison, if you've had a chance to look at that and you can give us your assessment of it?
Mayor members of the council, I have had a chance to look at it between that timeframe. There is only one paragraph that I would recommend removing from the MOU. It's paragraph number 13. Everything else looks great. They just use the standard template that the city uses.
Oh my gosh, which one is that?
Page four.
Yep, number 13, very bottom.
Oh, very bottom, okay, page four. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we edit that with this? Can we change that with this? Or do we need to?
We could make a motion to amend the MOU. And Teresa's also here, if she would like to.
Yeah, and see if there's any other questions or comments.
Teresa? Oh, you want to do that now?
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments?
Are we going to be able to ask after Teresa speaks?
Okay.
Teresa, did you hear what Dennison said about paragraph 13?
Yes, I did. And I agree, it's not a standard clause within any of the other MOUs. And I believe it got added because of someone else that was shared, the foundation was sharing copies of it because Hero is a nonprofit under their umbrella. So that's probably how it got added in, but it's not standard to all the other MOUs.
Do you have any objections to remove these?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or question or comments?
I just feel like this kind, maybe it's just me because I just am used to it. I feel like a lot of this information was thrown at us and a lot of, like you said, there was a lot of ugliness concerning it. I just, yeah, I feel like we need to discuss it a bit. But I honestly am kind of overwhelmed with what exactly, like I, I had no idea that this was even in place. I mean, you said it was planning back in April that you guys had discussed. Yeah, last April. It was April. Kind of the first time it was ever. Okay. Yeah, and then I had heard nothing of it until the past week. So I was kind of like, wait, what is, what's going on? I've heard a lot of, there's just a lot of chatter about it. And so before I do any action on it, I'd rather have a little more discussion.
Did you get a chance to read the email at Hero's Dean Center?
I, in my prep period, I had a chance to kind of skim through it a bit, but I haven't had a chance to really go over with it.
I just re-read it and it answered a lot of my questions. Yeah. I have a question.
So I do appreciate the article that was in the paper. And a lot of this information was new to me. I assume there was fact check, fact check done on that. I also appreciate the information that Teresa sent to the council on Sunday. But, and I also have attended the commissioner meetings where this has been a topic of brief discussion. And I would, I do agree with Cinta in that there's a lot of information with facts that maybe don't all agree. And I would just think that it would be good if we could have clarity on what the actual facts are and what sides are, and taking out any kind of opinions, but what the actual facts are and have that presented to council. I mean, I know that this MOU started out in November and right now we're just seeing it. And it just seems like there's been a lot of information we've been privy to. So I do think that we should get this sorted out. I would like to know if there's inaccuracies in the paper article, what those are, and have that on the clerk's light.
Teresa?
So what you need to sort out is the city council is that this has nothing to do with the former 3599 resolution where a location and a name of the observatory was approved by three of you still on here. Okay? This is about an MOU that behooves the city to have an MOU, an agreement, a memorandum of understanding with the operator of a recreational facility that has already been approved to be in place. It's nothing to do with any political, that convoluted and malign, you know, the project as well as myself and obfuscated the project itself and its status and what has happened, changed, hired two times. You could spend months trying to fact check it. Unfortunately, it wasn't interviewed properly, it wasn't researched properly. There was nothing wrong with the procedures that were followed in order to move this project along. So if you have questions about that, that is apart from an MOU in front of you right now that as you heard from city attorney, is completely in line with every other MOU out there that you have at a recreational facility or a party that is organized in relation to a park.
Thank you. Wait, don't go anywhere. Stand there. If you want to be so kind, does anybody have any questions for Teresa? And you can come back, maybe we'll recall you back to the podium and say any questions. Did you have a question or comment?
I was just going to say that I, you know, looking over, looking this over, what stood out to me was that it is similar to the MOU we have with the ice rink, with the school regarding big fall and softball. We have approved a site and a name and that has already happened. And so in my mind, our duty to the city is to make sure that we have our liability covered and that we have the expectations of the city clearly defined and the expectations of Hero's clearly defined. And I don't see any flaws in this document, not like failing to do that. And so I'm very comfortable moving forward with action on this MOU today.
Thank you. How many MOUs do we currently have with other groups? Are there like 10?
There's no.
Courtney? When I was on the park board, I had to help reach out to them and there are every user group that uses one of the parks.
My point is that there's a lot and this is pretty standard and it's good. Yeah, I'm just, I'm confused by the difference between having an MOU versus getting the permit for an event. I mean, are they completely different?
And how is it saying MOU just basically outlines who's responsible for what when they're working in cooperation?
Okay.
So it's again, pretty standard.
So to show that, for example, the school doesn't have to go out and event every time. I know that formerly every time I want to have a game. So this would be similar because those heroes would have a.
Typically, an MOU will also, each party has certain responsibilities in it. So typically, like with Red Lodge, they help maintain and put up the ice rink. That's what they give to the city in exchange for them getting exclusive use during, when they have an event. Yeah.
That's why.
Teresa?
It's no different. Certainly you wouldn't want to get, have an event application every time there's a star skating event. Every time there's a game, there's a ice rink, every time there's a ballgame. You know, every time there's an activity, you think of it that way rather than an event, which is different in the definition of, you know, different event applications within the city. Someone's going to use a facility over and over and over again in a standard manner. You wouldn't want to see an event application every time.
Okay. Would you?
Terry? And I just want to say one more thing. I wasn't, my inquiry about this project was more from the standpoint, this is something we're endorsing as a city to have happen. I did see a lot of information that didn't, that seemed to not agree. So it had nothing to do with actually passing the MOU. That's why I wanted to get Dennison's input. But I do think that there were enough questions raised in that article that we should know what the truth is. And again, nothing against Teresa, nothing against the paper, but I would like to know. So that was my comment.
And if we need to have further discussions, but it's my understanding that this MOU is just, is not about those.
Right.
And so I'd like to move forward with the MOU because it's pretty straightforward and I think everybody's had a chance to read it since it was posted. And I think everybody's had a chance to read it since it was posted on Friday. But are there any other areas of concern for people with questions?
All right.
Roll call. You want to amend it?
Yeah, let's amend the motion. So I amend the previous motion to include striking number 13 on page four underneath general provisions per the city attorney's recommendation.
Isn't that a motion?
Yep.
There's something.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call.
Battle?
Yes.
Daniel?
And this is just for the MOU, correct?
Correct.
Urban?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Eve?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to have a presentation on all of the work that's gone into the short-term rental recommendations. And we will start with Julie Burke, who's present online. Julie, are you there?
Yes, I am here. Sorry, I'm not there with you in person. And Courtney, were you able to get the presentation on the feed or?
Yeah, I'm trying to get the feed.
So I think you all have printouts of the presentation, so I can get started while Courtney tries to bring that live. I've been asked just to give an overview of, of what the committee investigated and the research done on behalf of the city. Click to the next page, please. Next page just outlines Resolution 3607. I think if you just scroll up. Resolution 3607 was the intention of creating a short-term rental committee. And that resolution was put together by the, the city council. And it was about disallowing non-compliant short-term rentals, considering restrictions on STRs, protecting and preserving the residential character of our neighborhoods, advise and give insight to the planning board, assist and advise the city on recommendations to improve regulations, and then research, discuss, and draft recommendations. So that was the resolution that was given to our committee that framed the work that we were asked to do. If you go down to the next slide, please. As soon as the committee started, the city had invested in new software, which was exciting. So the software that's now in place really tackled that non-compliance issue with STRs across Red Lodge. And streamlined the ability to license all STRs and to make sure that they were legally compliant. Everything from requiring the proper amount of resort tax, et cetera, to having a hotline that was automated where people could complain if there was a nuisance for STRs. So we were educated on that and understood what issues that that new software that the city had invested in was going to tackle. The next topic, if you scroll on one more page, we spent a lot of time talking about, and this is an important aspect, how many STRs are there in Red Lodge? And the first thing we needed to do was understand how many housing units were in Red Lodge. After much discussion, we agreed to use the DES figures. And as of December of last year, that number was 1,718 total units. Again, using the new City of Red Lodge software, we now had transparency and knew that the complete number of licensed short-term rentals within Red Lodge were 170. So if you look at that from a percentage point, we could then confirm that 9.9% of total housing units in Red Lodge had an STR. So when we were looking at other cities and what they were facing, it was important for us to note that in Red Lodge, it was just under 10% of our households, household units had an STR. The next page, please, Courtney. Zoning was one of the things that was pointed out in the ordinance for this committee to look at zoning and, and to consider regulate, regulations by zoning. Great West Consultants were included, and they reviewed all the STRs by zoning district, and they created a heat map. And I'd love this heat map to be included in the minutes because I think everyone needs to be familiar with this heat map. What our committee was able to discern is that these concentrated areas were quite widely dispersed throughout the city. We also knew that planning and zoning were the next two steps for these short-term regulations. And we were able to say, we weren't an expert in this area, and we didn't have further recommendations to make on that topic. The next slide is about an economic impact study. We felt it was important. There was a lot of conversation about safety and threats to the neighborhood. We wanted to balance that information by saying, what's the economic impact that STRs make across Red Lodge? And we were able to mimic a survey that was done by the Montana Recreation Institute. And so what we looked at were areas of economic impact were the direct resort fees, excuse me, resort tax and fees paid by short-term rentals, indirect resort tax paid by short-term rentals, income for owners and property managers, indirect income such as cleaners, for example. We looked at donations made by property managers, which are very generous. And we also really tried to look at a percentage of local business revenue across Red Lodge by non-residents. We really dug hard at this. We worked with the Chamber of Commerce. We went back to the Montana Tourism Institute, and it just wasn't a reliable figure. So we left out the business revenue. And again, tried to be incredibly conservative in our projections. And then figure that we came up with was STRs contributed $5 million annually and growing. And again, that's, that's a very conservative figure, but we just felt that piece was important to inform the next committees and city council that were looking at this issue. The next slide, we probably spent the majority of our time doing desktop research. So each and every meeting, and again, this took place last year, we looked at extensive case studies and solutions that were implemented by other counties, communities, cities. We certainly looked at as many as we could in the state of Montana and then tried to look at other sister communities. We also did an extensive review of research. As I mentioned, the Montana Institute for Tourism and Recreation was a great source of information. The National League of Cities, et cetera, et cetera. So the point here is this wasn't a new topic for Red Lodge to dive into. There was lots of existing information. There were no points of consistency, truly. But we spent a lot of time looking at what other solutions had been done across other states and cities throughout the U.S. The next slide, and this is a big one, is legal implications. There was a lot of discussion in our community. If we look at any regulations, will they be legal? We did look at a lot of third-party research, and there's really not a definitive point of view on legal implement, excuse me, implications. Several solutions that different cities and counties had implemented were assumed to be legal. And then they were being litigated and being challenged. Now, we didn't find anything that said anything was overturned. We weren't able to find, you know, the cost associated with any of these litigations. And then, of course, there's an ongoing proposals and recommendations at a state level that are ongoing as far as, I know Gianforte's latest one was voted down, but you might have seen that he was looking at making it illegal for any community to place regulations on STR. So that was just voted down. But this is an ongoing, very fluid issue when it comes to legal. And Dennis, I know, I know, Dennison, I know I'm glossing over this, but that was kind of what the committee felt from a legal point of view. And the next slide, there's two slides here. This one, I really want to spend a little bit of time on. This is the community survey, and I've seen some of these results pulled out inaccurately. So again, I really hope the full community survey, as well as the economic impact study, can be included in the minutes of this meeting. So all, so everyone on city council has an in-depth understanding to look at it in the time allotted. Today, I'm just going to take you through a rough overview. We did send out an online survey. 966 people responded. It's important to know that the questions used a sliding scale. So we weren't asking people yes or no. And this was based on input from the resort tax survey that had been implemented and talking to how they had structured that and really realizing that some of these questions aren't black and white, yes or no. So instead, we use a sliding scale of a zero to 100 in the questions I'm going to overview tonight. Zero meant definitely, I definitely agree with this statement. 100 meant not at all, I don't agree with this statement at all. So if you're in the fifth, if you're in the middle, 50, that meant you somewhat agreed with what this question was asking you. We were able to cut the results a number of different ways. Total community, business owners, short-term rental owners, only looking at residents within Red Lodge city limits. And we could do that both with and without STR. So again, that full research deck, you can look at every slice of it and get the information that you might need to help inform your decisions going forward. Here are kind of probably the four most important questions that we asked. Do you believe short-term rentals are nuisance regarding noise, parking, or garbage tidiness in your neighborhood? Again, that went back to the resolution. Do you believe short-term rentals are a threat to the safety of your neighborhood? If you just go one more slide. Do you believe property owners should have free choice in deciding to offer their property as a short-term rental? And then finally, are you in favor of exploring short-term rental regulations per city zone? And we gave an example, limiting the number of short-term rentals in some neighborhoods. So if you go to the next slide, please, thank you so much. Again, remember, this is a sliding scale. So out of all of those questions, a zero would be absolutely, I agree with this, and 100 would be, I don't agree at all. So if we look at that total, 966 people that responded, they are leaning towards STRs not being a nuisance. So they're coming in at 70 out of 100 was the average rating there. Are they a threat to the safety of your neighborhoods? 79. So again, leaning towards that, you know, not somewhat, but leaning towards not at all. The second point here, they're leaning towards free choice. So total survey respondents, they landed at a 28 on average, that yes, property owners should have free choice. And then openness to zoning regulations, that came in pretty much in the middle, 58. So again, moderate to less than somewhat owning openness to zoning regulations. How we've captured that. If you look at, and we, again, we can dissect this data all sorts of different ways. What did business owners rate? What did Red Lodge residents rate, particularly those without an STR? We pulled those out because they're slightly different. They lean towards STRs being somewhat of a nuisance. Again, they're 58, so just past that somewhat of a nuisance. However, they don't feel like they're a safety threat. Again, they're leaning, the average score there was 71. They're also leaning somewhat towards free choice, so 38. Again, 50 would be somewhat. And they're displaying somewhat openness to zoning regulations, so 44. So the total survey response was 58 for zoning. And if we look at just Red Lodge residents, and particularly those that don't have an STR, it comes up at 44. So I just really want to be crystal clear on that this is a sliding scale. It's incorrect to say, you know, 83% of residents believe this or that because it's not the way the survey was captured and the questions were asked. I know I'm racing through this, but hopefully there'll be some questions. The next two slides. I just wanted to be transparent and share, we looked at a number of tools to consider. And a lot of these were based on that desktop research. So what other solutions were out there? How are other communities tackling this issue of trying to balance our neighborhoods with the short-term rental business that's imperative for tourist towns? So this is a list of things we discussed. The first page is, you'll see these govern not restricted. Some of these we've got in place, like a hotline for nuisances. If you go to the second slide, please, or the next slide. These were the other categories and things that our committee discussed. So it was a pretty broad spectrum of due diligence here in the kinds of things that we considered and discussed in our short-term rental committee. If you go to the next slide, which is the final slide, this is where our committee landed. We came up with updates to the zoning regulation language. And I believe that was in the, your packet for tonight. We came up with recommended short-term rental classifications, so not treating every short-term rental the same. We recommended a good neighbor policy, and importantly, with enforcement, how do you enforce these things? And a lot of that came back to the zoning regulations language being very clear. For example, on who an emergency contact was, what was eligible as an emergency contact, the amount of time that they had to respond, fines if they weren't able to respond, et cetera. We also, not with total consensus, but recommended an STR cap, an additional 50% from the current level as calculated by Red Lodge Land and Use Planning Committee. So if you remember, that 9.9% or rounded up to 10% for tonight's purposes, an additional 15% would mean going up to 15% of all household units in Red Lodge could have a legal short-term rental license. We recommended grandfathering in all current units operating as an STR. There was also a recommendation to ensure that the short-term rentals are operating as a professional business to require them to have an EIN number for tax reporting purposes. And we also, back to that heat map and the zoning use that we were asked to look at, our recommendation was that the planning board should address that as that was more of their area of expertise. That's the culmination of the overview that I wanted to share today.
Thank you, Julie. Is anybody have any questions for Julie? Teri?
Julie, you did a great job. Thank you for all that information, very, very helpful. One of the questions I had, we'll go back to the slide where we talked about 9%, we have 9% STRs in Red Lodge. In all of the studies that you've done, what is typically the trigger point for communities limiting STRs?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. Yeah, that's a good question. I don't think there's a definitive answer. I would say the ones that we looked at were, you know, Tahoe and Aspen and Gardner places where people felt it had definitely gone too far, were in the 20s for sure. Other than that, it's hard to pinpoint kind of what that tipping point is. But the communities that were really saying, you know, this has dismantled the integrity of our, of our community tended to be in the 20s.
Any more questions for Julie? Teri?
Sorry, I'm the data person. So the other question I had for you was, as we're talking about, you know, where these restrictions might be for STRs, do we have any idea in Red Lodge, how many residents are in HOAs that have STR restrictions?
No, but that's very good, that's a very good question. I don't have that information.
Yeah, because I think that'd be valuable. Because when I look back at your recommendations, or the recommendations of the committee, I'm sorry, where we're talking about it, an STR cap, based on the way the information was presented today, it seems like the data isn't there to endorse that. So my comment.
Any other questions at the table? Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
All right, next up is. Jess, Jess, Jess. Jeff. Jeff. Benedetto from the planning board.
Jeff Benedetto, Vice President, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm here to report on the steps and processes that we went through as planning board relative to the recommendations that we received from the Short-Term Advisory Committee. And also point out that what we submitted to the council was recommended modifications to Red Lodge zoning regulation four point four point two zero subsection L. Those pertain primarily to update and updates to the zoning regulations relating to short-term rentals. I'll kind of briefly go through the process that we went through, just as a reminder and background. On December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, planning board was presented with nine recommendations from the Short-Term Advisory Committee. And by City Resolution Number three six zero seven, the Planning Board and Zoning Commission was charged with reviewing recommendations from the, from the STR Advisory Committee and the Land Use and Planning Standing Committees. Our directives was to prepare updated language applicable to governing short-term rentals again, four point four point two zero subsection L within the twenty twenty-two zoning regulations. It was apparent from the start, once we started our deliberations, that short-term rental is a complex issue with several moving parts. We received written verbal comments, addressed the impacts on residential neighborhoods, property rights, history of operations, enforcement issues, housing availability, real estate market, city finances, general trust and respect. All of those were comments brought forward by both verbal and, and written comments that we received. While bearing respect for all the issues raised, planning board tried to stay within our lane and focus on the issues pertaining to impacting zoning regulations. And our first order of business was to look at the advisory committee's recommendations to determine which of those fell within zoning under the guidance of the planning board. And, and those that we felt were really more the responsibility and fell within city ordinances. Those that we concluded that really were not planning board issue was the recommendation for employee identification number, or I EIN, number of licenses to be issued, which is related to the cap threshold issue, management owner classifications. Again, that was, we felt that was more, felt more within the realm of, of a city, of city ordinances and, and the city council. Regardless of classification, we thought all STRs should be treated the same. And the nature of policy guidelines, again, this would be more out of the realm of related to zoning. We did go and discuss in depth several of the recommendations, and those included review of zoning regulations pertaining to short-term rentals and if they're enforcement, review of definitions relative to short-term rentals and the STR classification proposal and proposed STR threshold cap formula. And to discuss and resolve in the future, that's still on the table, is reviewing and discussing the allowed use tables for short-term rentals in residential and commercial zones. A number of sources were available to us. I won't go through that list. Our recommended amendments for the short-term rental regulations, along with proposed Resolution twenty twenty-three zero one, are in your packet. The proposed amendments accomplish the task that, that we were assigned to, to accomplish, to complete. I talked a little bit about the classification, we, discussion that we had. There were three classifications proposed to, that were part of the recommendations. Carbon County resident owner, professionally managed Carbon County resident owner and non-resident owner. We reached out to the city attorney for an opinion and, and discussed this recommendation on length. City Attorney Dennison cautioned us that unless we grounded classifications based on health and safety or some other specific criteria, they could be considered arbitrary and, and potential issues of discrimination. Based on that, the planning board appointed a subcommittee comprised of Jan, Polly, and Courtney. And they were charged to review, review the classifications and the, and they came back. The subcommittee came back as with concluding that the classifications could be instrumental in collecting data for the city and improving the ability to refine regulations in the future. The other I lost my place. In the future, so in the document dated February twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the planning board's committee recommended revised classifications for, for the whole planning board and zoning commission at the March eighth meeting. After discussed, after discussion, it was determined that perhaps four classifications should be considered. Owner occupied short-term rental, owner managed short-term rental, non-owner managed short-term rental, and grandfathered short-term rental respecting existing operators. After, after discussion, the planning board determined that, again, these, this particular issue was, is best handled again by city council. Also, that came into play was the pending legislation in the Montana Legislature that may have impacts on how we look at the allowed use tables. And we wanted to emphasize that any existing STR operator impacted by changes should be, or should be grandfathered in. And something to consider in the future is also reviewing, as we review the allowed use tables is, is to maybe take a look at how HOAs treat STRs in their respective areas. Relative to the short-term rental cap or threshold, we looked at the formula that set up the STR threshold. And after much discussion, the planning board voted four to three that the threshold cap formula had merit. There were some, there was some, some support for regulatory controls limiting the number of STRs. And again, that came from, from the public, some of the public comments. It is important to point out that any cap would be reviewed annually by the city. And we were cautioned by the city attorney again about applying a cap based on classification. Any cap would have to be justified and based on specific criteria. We received numerous conflicting opinions regarding the cap from the public, some for and some against. And again, concluded that this was not an issue that was really appropriate for the planning board to make a decision on. And primarily, from that standpoint, if the cap is reviewed annually by the city council and adjustments are made, it's much more difficult to amend zoning regulations than to, so actually keeping it out of the zoning creates more flexibility. And then under enforcement, the planning board recognized that the issue of enforcement was very important to survey responders and mentioned often in public comment. We have presented rules that unless enforced are meaningless. We recognize that enforcement can be a manpower issue. However, the rules are in place to minimize the impact on surrounding properties and ensuring public health and safety and welfare of applicants. And then to acknowledge the many comments that we received relative to economics. As you heard from Julie, the advisory committee discussed the economic impact of STRs. However, was a concern mentioned in, in some of the public comments and addressed at several of the planning board meetings. They commented the potential impact on city resort taxes as well as overall retail income to city business. We listened, but again, our task was focused on those issues that were related primarily to, to zoning-related issues. In summary, as you review and you rally proposed amendments in front, in front of you, please keep in mind these are operational rules for short-term rentals. We've listened to the public and we have honored the work of the STR committee. We have tried to address the issues in fair and equitable manner, and some people have had bad experiences with STRs. But according to survey public input and our research, most are good operations and follow the rules. Some of the notable changes that we made in the short-term rental section, we changed, changed the definition for short-term relative from thirty nights, or thirty days to twenty-nine consecutive nights. We increased, made adjustments to the response time, which was thirty minutes. We changed it to the thirty-minute verbal response with sixty minutes onsite response if necessary. We also inserted that STRs must meet regulations and codes at the Red Lodge Bar Department, establish noise restrictions from ten PM to seven AM. And parking, people with STRs should work with their neighbors, respect their neighbors' need for parking as well, and that this is, is a citywide issue. We thank the members of the planning board and zoning commission for the diligence and commitment in preparing this document. We also appreciate the often passionate input from the public. We hope the council will approve the recommendations of Section four point four point two zero, specific use standards for short-term rentals. Thank you for your attention of our proposed amendments. And I'll be willing to answer any questions, or if I missed anything, Al, who's online and is also able to address questions. And I believe Courtney handed out a copy of this before.
Thank you, Jeff. Al, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not really. I, I think you have the written report in front of you, at least I hope you do. We've made some adjustments in it in the, in the last couple of hours as we tried to get things right. And so if you don't have it, Courtney has it, she'll get it to you. And also, I just feel it's important to compliment the advisory committee and Julie's presentation. I, I think that was a good summary. And we tried to incorporate and respect what the advisory committee did and while also listening to the, the general public. And so we hope that you'll review these amendments thoroughly and, and your recommendations.
Thanks, Al. All right, is there any questions or comments at the table? Again, we're going to be looking at this with public hearings. And so it's all very good information to have, and we will have more opportunities to ask questions. So providing, I'll present or sincere. But if you have any more questions or comments that you'd like to, that you'd like to share with us and send to you at, you know, via email or a phone call. And if we don't have any more comments at the table or questions, then we'll move on. All right, thank you, Al. Thank you, Jeff. And thank you to all the people who worked on this project. It took a long time and there was a lot of work involved. Okay. I guess I'm not done yet. Jan, Al has a presentation too. She had you on my list, I tried to make it earlier. Yes?
Thank you. Okay. So I am tasked with giving a summary of the Land Use and Planning Committee research and recommendations for short-term rentals. This is word-heavy, and I apologize. It will be included in a minute, and there are a few copies floating around. But I wanted to make sure that I got all the language in here. So the first recommendation is to require either an employer identification number issued by the IRS or a lodging facility sales and use tax permit issued by the state. The justification for this recommendation, the low-barrier free action that helps all owners and managers understand that they are operating a business and are responsible for the community as a visitor owner. It levels the playing field between professionally managed and owner-managed properties and encourages remittance of resort tax. It also is unanimously recommended by the advisory committee. Recommendation two, the Good Neighbor Policy. Adopt a written Good Neighbor Policy summarizing common laws, regulations, and community norms pertinent for visitors. It is the responsibility of the STR business owner to ensure that the Good Neighbor Policy is provided to all guests. And it is the responsibility of the city to provide the most updated Good Neighbor Policy to each STR business owner. Justification for this recommendation, it's an easy way to help visitors feel welcome while conveying information that will help prevent or mitigate unneighborhood behavior and/or complaints. It was unanimously recommended by the advisory committee. And the Land Use and Planning Committee would further recommend to the city that we provide the Good Neighbor Policies for all on the city's website. It's a good one-stop shop to find some good information for new residents in general as they come into our community. Recommendation three, grandfathered status. STR business licenses are valid for one year and can be renewed. STR business licenses issued or renewed as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three are considered grandfathered as it pertains to any future changes in STR zoning or setting of an overall threshold of total number of short-term rentals allowed within city limits. STR business licenses are assigned to the owner and the dwelling unit together if they are non-transferable. Owners cannot take their license to a different dwelling unit, and licenses do not carry over if there is change in ownership. For those licenses with an in-progress application as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, city staff will first determine if each application has met all of the criteria for approval. And if so, that license will be awarded with a grandfathered status. The justification for this recommendation in alliance with how the city typically addresses other changes in zoning, you know, basically, it's just how we do any kind of zoning changes. It ensures current operators meeting requirements will be able to continue to operate. And it was unanimously recommended by the advisory committee. Recommendation number four, ensure that these licenses are used. So along with compliance with all other federal, state, and local regulations, STR licenses must be used within a year of being issued or renewed. If an owner or property manager does not renew their STR license by September first of that year, the license will be terminated. If the license is terminated, the property owner will be required to apply for a new license. If the license is not used within three hundred and sixty-five consecutive days, it will be automatically revoked. Use of an STR license will be determined by the remittance of resort tax to the city of Red Lodge. I'll add a note here just to say that we had some extensive conversation about how business license owners looking to renew will have lots of opportunity to comply and will have interaction with will have interaction with city staff. It won't be a surprise if their license is terminated. Justification, it'll deter hoarding of unused licenses, it allows an ample grace period for compliance, and remittance of resort tax is a clear indicator of use and is already monitored by staff. Okay, recommendation five, this one has two slides. So, establish a threshold of total STR licenses permitted within the city. Total number of STR licenses permitted within the city, we're going to do this as a formula, so that'll be calculated as a function of the total number of permitted short-term rentals in the city of Red Lodge, A, divided by the total number of dwelling units in the city of Red Lodge, calculated by disaster and emergency services, DES, B, with an additional 50% added, or 1.5. The threshold will be calculated by Red Lodge's staff using the formulas of each year annually. In the event that the threshold is reached, a waiting list shall be established to facilitate new permits when existing permits expire and are not renewed. Regulations in this ordinance will be reviewed as a force by resolution, and it is important to note that the resolution is where it is appropriate to put the how and the who for when this gets reviewed annually, and so just know that the only reason why it isn't listed in here is because it's appropriate to put it in resolution, not ordinance, and that is coming. And so, because that formula can be a little difficult to understand, I have an example here, which is slightly better. So, for example, let's say today we have 180 short-term rentals and 1,750 total dwelling units within city limits. So, if you were to divide 180 by 1,750, you get about 10%, 10.2 acres. You multiply that by 50%, or 1.5, and you come up with 15.49%, which means you go from, which equates to 15% of the total dwelling unit, 1,750 dwelling units equals 270 licenses. What does that mean? That means 270 total licenses will be available for that year, July 1 through June 30th, and of that 270, 180 are current and might renew. If they all renew, then 90 additional licenses will be available for that year. And so, essentially, the recommendation for today is that Red Lodge calculates the threshold as roughly 15% of total dwelling units. The justification for the, you know, the previous two presentations kind of hinted at some of these things, and so I'll just add to that. The survey results show that the majority of the community does not find that the current amount of short-term rentals, which we are at right around 10% right now, cause significant safety or nuisance issues. And so, given that, this recommendation mandates a regular review process while allowing ample room for growth, 50% growth. It also highlights the DES figures as the most accurate for the total number of dwelling units within city limits. So, I'm sure hopefully that's a pretty good summary, but if there's questions, we can address those. Recommendation six, I am almost done. Collect data on STR classifications. And so, you've heard tonight that all three of our, of these groups have discussed classifications in detail. Where we landed for land use and planning was that the city shall conduct, shall collect data on STR ownership and management structure to inform future decision-making regarding STRs within city limits. Examples of ownership and management structures that we could use are owner-occupied, professionally managed, managed by out-of-state entity, and then some of the other ones that the planning board mentioned earlier. Here's where I want to pause and just say, the committee, the Land Use and Planning Committee is delaying identification of any specific classifications right now, because they will likely be influenced by the legislative action at the state level that is currently underway. Justification for the collection of this data, collecting classification data will enhance the city's ability to make future decisions regarding STRs, and specifically, the owner-occupied classification was unanimously recommended for exclusion from the threshold by the advisory committee. It was important to have a good definition for that moving forward. To wrap things up, because the state legislature is currently debating multiple bills that may influence how the city chooses to regulate STRs, the Land Use and Planning Committee requests that the public hearings be moved forward to dates following the end of the legislative session. So, that means they will be canceled in April and put forward after the legislative session is concluded, and we understand how that new legislation impacts our decision-making.
Thank you, Jen. Questions for Jen? Anybody have any questions? Here, Jen. Is it open to the community, or is it just for us?
No, it's just for us. I have a question, if we all have more opportunities for these things.
I have a question. So, I mean, I think it looks like there's a lot of thought going into putting structure around this, a lot of structure, which is going to require enforcement, and we know that's always a challenge here in Red Lodge with the resources we have. So, what is going to be different, or what's going to need to be put in place to make sure this is enforced fairly? And I was wondering how that was going to relate to any fees, or what we're going to be doing as far as fees for STRs? Is that going to change?
So, I think your questions are mostly planning questions. I would say that for enforcement, you had asked, sorry, I got a little distracted by, you had like three parts to your question, so.
Two, I've got a third one, but I was waiting.
Okay, start again.
Okay, so I'm just curious, there's a lot of structure, which I think was really well-thought-out, I like that, but, you know, enforcement is always the key. So, what I want to find out from you is how are we going to enforce this? Is this going to require more people, or is this going to be the police involved in this, or how's it going to be enforced?
So, the enforcement question was addressed some in the planning documents, and please, Polly, Al, Josh chime in here. But, so, for example, the Good Neighbor Policy has the hotline number on it. We have a hotline now, if you're having issues, you can call as either someone who is renting or a neighbor. In addition, the, some of the language that was proposed as edits to the zoning document were specifically put forward by city staff because they were having trouble with the current, they were having trouble enforcing what the intent was because the language was unclear. And so, a lot of what you're looking at from the planning board's presentation, our recommendation is to tighten up that language so to make enforcement easier. And also, I think the longer we use the new, well, it's not really new anymore, it's a year-old, the software that we have, the better it will be on that front as well. Do you guys have anything you want to add, or is Julie still there?
I mean, the software has already paid for itself with how much we've been able to get resort taxes remitted for the last three years, some businesses that weren't licensed. You know, we've been able to add, we started out at like 110, and now we're almost at 180 licenses, so the software has helped find dozens of unlicensed businesses, so I think it's adding $20,000 extra in resort taxes that we probably wouldn't have had, so it's already helping for itself, which is where that additional staffing involved with the enforcement.
So, the question, though, so what is the licensing fee every year for that software for maintenance? Because usually, there's a licensing fee associated with that.
13,000.
13,000, okay. So, you're going to have to make up a difference of 13,000 a year to support that?
Oh, we've already made that up four times.
But I'm saying, you're going to probably reach a steady state when you have all of the STRs accounted for, right? And then, you're just going to get incrementals after that, so you're thinking that you're going to be able to pay? Are you going to have any, do you anticipate any increases in STR fees, or, I mean, probably just 13,000?
The admin committee is also looking at business license fees right now across the board, because they haven't been raised in.
Twenty years.
Twenty years. And so, I suspect that STRs will be a line item as we move that forward as well.
That'll probably be a line item with that as opposed to as part of what you're doing here, you're saying?
Right, we're not, correct, we're not going to address business license fees separately for short-term rentals in this ordinance, it would be part of the business license fees resolution.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, the other thing, I just, I mean, when I see this thing with the STR classification, it gives pause for thought, it looked like discrimination to me. And so, I was just curious, from Dennison's point of view, what he thought the liability of the city is going to be if something like that is put forward?
Can I interject? Remember, we're just collecting data, we're not.
Yeah, we're not, we're not proposing to provide protection.
Right, but I guess if it's in here for discussion, I'd just like to hear what Dennison thinks about that proposal.
Very good.
Mayor, I'm going to go to the city council. A lot of it will depend, and I know most of it's going to be weighted, we're going to wait on, actually, my understanding is postpone the actual vote on the language of it, the ordinance, due to the impact that the LSHR might have on it. So, a lot of it will depend on what the final language of the bill and the ordinance will be. Thank you.
Fantastic. A quick question. So, I know you use the number of housing units based on the DES figure. Does that take into account, like, if someone has an upper-level in a basement apartment, is that two units, or is that one unit?
Yeah, so that's a very good question, and part of the reason why we went with, and Courtney can chime in here too, but part of the reason why we went with Disaster Emergency Services is because they are specifically working all the time on delineating where people are. And so, yes, it would be split up, it would be like, that would be two units.
Right, correct. And as they, as they improve, right?
And so, it's important to just acknowledge that we are operating with imperfect data. It is not the case that every unit in Red Lodge is already accounted for, but it is the case that DES has that most up-to-date data every single year, and so as they do their work, this will improve also, because they have emergency services need to do the same things that we do.
And the same if you have a garage with a basement, or a garage apartment above it, then that would be.
Correct.
A second unit, yes, not just one.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's to help identify where people are.
So, that would increase the number of units in the total housing units in Red Lodge?
Yeah. Yep. That's a great question.
More questions, more comments? Again, we'll be looking at this further, and we'll be scheduling public hearings, and we're going to await a timeline for those hearings and so after the legislative session.
So, it would mean that we need to cancel the two that are currently announced for April.
Do I need to make a motion to do that?
No.
Or?
Oh, yeah.
Because it's out there as they're scheduled right now, but the public hearings are scheduled right now for April, but we don't want, what we're.
I haven't gotten, like, a mail. Did we get them, are you mailing it out?
No, it's in the newspaper.
Recycling was bailed out.
Yeah.
It wouldn't have been a mail-in for STR.
Because there's a fee.
The only reason the recycling went out was because of the fee.
So, was it in the paper?
It will be tomorrow, eminently.
Yeah.
Thursday.
It's, I think it's a request for continuation of the public hearings, I think that's officially what we should.
When, do you want it continued to June?
I think I would say.
When is the legislature done?
Mid-April, or mid-May, mid-May.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
Yeah.
I will move to request continuation of the public hearing until after the completion of the legislative session, the end of May 2023.
So, the end, by the way, in the legislative session.
Because then Dennison's going to have to repeat them.
Yeah. Well, we all, yeah, we will.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussions? We'll call. Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
All right, thank you all for that. Next up is the Standing Committee, is Public Health and Safety. Yesterday at 3:00 p.m. Nope, 4:00 p.m., but that's okay. Today was 3:00. Today was 3:00. 4:00 p.m. Yeah. Sorry. I'm trying to list it on the agenda. Yeah. It'll take a while to get it straight. Okay, so we made yesterday, and one of the things we, a couple of things we continue to talk about, and that's a couple of ordinances we're proposing. One is about one-wheel ordinance, so, and the other one has to do with the fireworks, and both of those ordinances that we're looking at, we've had discussions on both sides, and Chief Schrock would like to talk to Dennison and get some things straightened out as far as liability for the city, depending on how these things are written. So, anyway, so we'll probably have more information on that next time. The next thing, let's see, oh, sorry. Thank you. A little higher, down to the red. No, that way. Sorry, I forgot to print this out on the paper person, so I'm having to rely here on print. The other thing is, I just want to bring up again, as everybody reads the news, we understand that these resource officers are really important, and that's one of the things that Chief Schrock has expressed to us, that he would really like us to work on, say, about getting grants to support one or two resource officers in our community. Continue to look at that. And then, let's see, oh, and then, something new that was brought up by Sinta Ann, actually by Sinta Ann, Jody had mentioned this, was about something around animal control plan or ordinance, and that has to do with not only wild animals, feeding, control of them in town. I also brought up the thing about, you know, dogs on leashes, that seems to be an issue as well, but then talking to Chief Schrock, I said, well, you know, if you look at all of the complaints or, you know, issues that we have in town, it's pretty much in the noise. So, I think that those are both important things for the community, but not that important. So, we're going to put those kind of on the back burner. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and I believe Kelly has talked to Tom Kuntz as well, so please, he's going to be having, we talked, he came in here and gave a presentation on the ambulance tax and raising that. So, he is working on a resolution that will come before city council that will be presenting on that. And then, the second thing he talked about was an option to annex the city into the fire district, and that would allow us to reallocate the 28 mils that we're currently paying for services, which is about $250,000. So, given that budget is coming up, that budget discussions is certainly something that we may want to look at, we'll determine that. And then, the last question was from Sandy Conley, she attended our meeting as part of the public, and she wanted to know if the city has assigned a DES coordinator for the city of Red Lodge for the public comments made by Commissioner Bill Bullock. And so, the answer, we were lucky enough to have the mayor there to address that directly, and the mayor will direct the city staff under the lead of the county effort if they experience another disaster. City staff will continue to participate in county meetings, and if you have any questions, you should contact the mayor directly. That's a paraphrase, but it's all in your case, and if you need anything, you're always welcome. Contact the city for information, and if we don't have it, we'll be able to do it ourselves. So, thank you, Carrie. You're welcome. All right, admin and finance.
Well, we met this morning at 9:00 o'clock. We just briefly touched on the recycling resolution that we reviewed tonight, mainly some of the questions brought up by Mary Cameron, and we discussed that earlier today. We also have started to review business license fees and DES fees. Those will be up for discussion hopefully in April. They'll come before, cancel those resolutions first as a discussion item and then as a public hearing for everyone to participate in. So, there will be two opportunities for people to discuss those. And as Jen says, and Chris has said, the business license. And as Jen says, and Chris has said, the business license fees have not been changed in probably over 20 years, so we are reviewing those, and we do have some, some new business classifications that we'll be adding to it, which you'll be able to take part in. Event fees, that resolution, we are just trying to bring it more in line with the new ordinance that was passed, you know, as a private party versus a public, a private event versus a public event, and also to allow the parks to be rented out for a private, you know, someone wants to rent out the gazebo for a birthday party, you know, it would be a smaller, it would be a different fee structure. So that's what we're covering on there. Any other comments?
I have a question. Yeah.
One question. I was looking through the meeting minutes, the one of February 28th. Mayor Cogswell said that as of May of last year, the city was involved in that fraudulent vendor, vendor claim, which we learned about. The city contacted our insurance and police department, an investigation was conducted, and the city's insurance covered the claim, and the city paid $25,000 deductible from reserves. So my only question was a follow up to you guys, and I don't know if the mayor wants to interject as well. I was wondering the nature of that mistake, and not to place on anybody in particular, but I'm wondering if there's any new processes put in place to ensure that that doesn't happen again, and since I know you're, you guys are the ones that go through and check off on all of the bills, that that was going to affect the way you're doing that now?
I think I've mentioned earlier, earlier leading, that we received some recommendations moving forward.
Are you going to elaborate? Okay.
Carrie, I think one thing I would add is just that it's, the error that happened is not something that, that Jody or I or anyone signing claims could have identified while reviewing claims.
Are you clear on what changes I've made? Are you, are you guys, because you're working in that, with that department, are you confident? Have you seen the new processes in place to ensure that doesn't happen again?
I have not. I have not yet.
Okay.
There was a criminal act, and many criminal acts can happen, and we can't always tell what criminal act those are these, so.
Oh, and just the other thing that we will obviously be working forward to the next week, the budget stuff, so you know, that's top of our.
Next Monday. Thank you. All right, next up is land use and planning. Let me take that?
Sure.
We, we spent most of the time talking about the steam center MOU, and Chief Whistler explained some of the things that we have questions on, which we didn't have many questions, and, and then the bulk of the meeting, we talked about the STR recommendations and the draft resolution, and a lot of talk about the threshold and the classifications, and it was really nice to have some of our local business owners and other people present at that meeting to get some feedback and some dialogue, so. Yeah, that's about it.
Yeah.
That's all we got.
Yeah, thanks for coming to the meeting today after the. Conversation about it.
Yep.
Thank you. Next up is public court, I believe that's you again, Carrie?
Yep. And it was at 3:00 today, and it will be for the remainder of the year as far as we know now, if you want to come to that, you're always welcome. So today we had the mayor in attendance with us. Unfortunately, Jim Bushnell was not there, because a lot of the questions that we had were kind of Jim Bushnell questions. So I'll just go over what we primarily talked about, and this was, you'll see if you looked at the agenda, resident preparation for spring runoff, and so we, we talked about this the last couple of meetings. Jody, Sinta and I, as individual council members, are working with a group of concerned citizens in our ward that would like to plan in advance for how they can protect their personal property in their home in the event that another flood happens this year. And so we have, there is going to be a meeting on Thursday, April 6th. This is separate from the, separate from the city, this is separate from the city council. It's going to be hosted and sponsored by the lodge, the Elks Lodge, and everyone that has, that is interested on learning more about preparing for spring runoff is, is invited to attend, so I just wanted to say that. It's going to be at 6:00 on April 6th at the Elks, and so we will be advertised, it will be advertising for this, and again, I want to reiterate again that this is being conducted by concerned citizens. It's a responsibility of the homeowners to prepare their properties for spring runoff, and we think that's important, so we're supporting the community by being involved.
And that's it. And Samson or Courtney, if you have any more. Because that is not a city, I'm sorry, and thank you for making that.
You're welcome.
All right, so if there's any correspondence, then it's in your package, and with that, you could have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I second.
All right. Thank you, everybody for coming.